Cool, cool. Awesome. I just need whoever you whoever's like in charge of.
I'll just keep the name off the contract.
Okay. Sounds good.
I know there's a lot going on with the outside of the country. I see Icos Corporation.
Is Oregon on the bird?
Has it started?
There will be the last.
I wasn't sure how far they were planning.
Yeah, I did, Jay. I was actually, we were at our first school reviews yesterday. Be one of those things that probably in three years will be starting over again.
Yeah, well, every three years I have. Three to five.
That's why. I know when you say the public education get a lot of teachers would get a lot of.
We started this in.
Started this, um.
Hi, Kerry.
Got any sauce?
Uh huh.
You have secret sauce.
You have secret sauce?
I've never signed that.
I know.
We're here all the time.
We'll go ahead and at this time at eleven oh one and bring our work session for September twenty third back into session. And our next item is eleven AM Central Oregon Intergovernmental Council update. Forted, there's Andrew. Sorry, new grantor. Welcome. I guess I could draw. Welcome to you and your staff.
Well, thank you. We're really pleased to be here. I know, at least for me, it's probably long overdue for a visit, at least a formal meeting with commissioners. So I'm glad we were able to get this scheduled in and have the whole team here.
Yeah.
I don't think we're missing anyone. So we have a presentation we wanted to run through that kind of summarizes what we've been working on, what some of our outcomes are and have been. I think it's going to be a team approach here, so I don't know how we'll do this necessarily logistically, but I guess I'll get it loaded up. But I guess just to open again, we appreciate the time to come here. We really value the work that we do here. It's very important to us and I know that even with our home base in Central Oregon and that the distance can be a bit of a barrier in terms of communication. I know we've got a great staff here and I just want you both to know that we're very interested in continuing to build on our success, continuing to do good work, maintaining our physical presence here and kind of navigating some changes in the workforce development system. And there's two major ones going on that we'll hit on. One is the federal reauthorization of the Workforce Investment Act, which resulted in some changes that we're still sorting through and assessing. That legislation goes into effect in July. The other being the state's restructuring of the workforce development system and the local area redistricting. We have some information on that we'll go over within the presentation.
Before you go on, Andrew, just in we've talked about how we're going to do this, the newspaper, the Lake County Examiner does report out on our meetings. But now the last few meetings, they are videoing them and they go up on YouTube. So we just need to make sure everybody is aware of that and as we move forward, hand in glove, could we introduce the staff?
Sure, sure. Yes. And I'll start. Andrew Spreadborough, I'm the executive director for COIC, Central Oregon Intergovernmental Council. I'll allow the team.
Kevin Bradley, I'm the youth program manager at COIC.
Christie Horn, youth, or sorry, adult counselor at COIC.
The camera threw off, she told me.
So I'm Perry Andrews, I'm the program manager for COIC down in the region eleven, which is Clamath Lake County.
Jay Farman, classroom instructor.
Jeff Sample, the youth employment counselor.
The only other thing I'll say is that we, I think, had hoped to have a conversation here. We'd really like to hear from you in terms of your experience in working in the COIC, what you're hearing, what you're thinking of, how we're doing. If there are important workforce development issues that we need to be aware of, economic development issues, education issues, we'd really like feedback as well. We really do, this is an opportunity for us to also hear from you in terms of your priorities and your interests. So, um. Who wants to go first, Perry? Do you want to kind of come up?
Sure, I'll start and then we'll just kind of, before we do tag team.
Yeah, so I guess the structure of this, we're going to roll through our youth program first, then our adult dislocated worker program second.
Should we look at the screen or should we look at Perry?
I'll look at the screen. In fact, I would advise the camera to look at the screen as well. So, yeah, again, I'm not going to read these to you. I can if you would like me to, but I prefer not to. I've been enough of these where they read the slides to me that I do like to go forward and that is. So again, we're going to talk about our, basically, we have three programs here in Lakeview. We have our alternative education center, which we contract with Lakeview High School and provide credit recovery and GED services to at-risk youth that are in trouble of not completing their high school program in the traditional setting. We have a youth employment program, which is what Jeff does and that takes kids, he works with kids in school, puts one in the school crew. And we also work with employer partners in the community to place them in work experience components to give them some work experience. Our goal is to get kids either into employment and or further education. You'll see that on here. And then our final program is what Christie does and that's our adult program. We work with adults and dislocated workers under the WIA program, soon to be WIOA program. And she also is the jobs contractor for DHS here in Lake County. So we provide the welfare to work program for targeting human services here in Lake County, putting individuals on TANF cash assistance through DHS into some work experience components and assisting them in job search skills. And then also the offset program in DHS, which is the Blue Stamp Employment Training Program, where we offer job search assistance and assistance helping those folks transition back into the work world as well. So those are kind of the three programs we work.
Is it going to be okay if we ask questions?
Of course. I encourage you to ask questions.
My memory goes real quick. Christie and Mo came over a number of months back and one of the things that jumped out at me and I don't know if the trend is still there, but we had, and Christie, correct me if I'm wrong on these numbers, but we had like thirty-four openings for work and they weren't all minimum wage. And we weren't having, I mean, they were on the board for a long, long time. We weren't having a lot of people taking us up on these openings. Is that still the trend?
Yeah, and once the youth is done, then we'll go onto the adult slides that we put together and it'll show how many jobs that we have open at this time, entry level and skills and stuff like that. So we'll be going over all that for you.
Great, thank you.
That's a trend we're seeing in all of our counties. You know, as the economy is shifting, suddenly businesses are having a little more trouble finding people to fill these openings, like entry level positions.
Well, I tried to be open minded about this whole situation. We have an early learning center here, you know, for additional training, skills, skill up and so forth. And I don't know how closely we work with them as opposed to the high schools. But, you know, we, Perry just alluded to a lot of social programs that we provide assistance on. And somewhere we've got to break that trend that, you know, it's, we've got to get people back to work because we have, you know, we have the ability to do it as far as the jobs. And I'll defer to what Christie said, we'll be talking about that.
Yes, I think she's got, she, one of her slides she's going to talk about later is the challenges she faces in that endeavor. Because it is, I mean, I'm sure Christie's more frustrated than anybody when an employer calls with a job opening that she can't fill, even though there's a ten percent unemployment rate in Lake County. Should be people to take those jobs worse than same thing in Clamath, I'm sure, in Central Oregon. It's a challenge. I'm not sure, I'm not sure how we address that right now. We're working on that.
Perry, and I will let you go on in the presentation, but we talked about this at the ARWEB about two years ago. And the difference between unemployed and employable. And I don't know if we addressed that, you know, and how we address that, how we get, it's not just a Lake, Clamath.
No, it's a societal.
It's nationwide, but somewhere we've got, you know, we've got to get a handle on that.
I agree.
I'll stop there.
Yep.
Go ahead.
So anyway, again, you can see the bullet items are alternative education. I'll let you guys read through those. If you have any questions about what each of those mean or what they're referring to, I have my expert here, Jay, Mr. Farman, behind me.
Well, I'm going to comment again because we get updates periodically from District Seven. We made a point, not the last update, but sometime in the recent past, and we really appreciate what Jay and COIC bring to the table relative to District Seven's ability to talk about the graduation rates because COIC, I think, has been very instrumental and it's not as widely known as we'd like it to be.
Yep, and I appreciate that, yes. So you can see, our average enrollment is fifteen to twenty-four of part-time students right now. I think Jay has thirteen right now, eight full-time kids. And we're in two years, two weeks or three weeks into the school year, there are thirteen kids from LHS there. What is the?
Do you have a maximum amount of students you can take?
What is your capacity, Jay?
I had from twenty, from eighteen to twenty-two last year, but they all, they're not there all the same time.
Yeah.
So it works out well. You know, seventeen is, I have seventeen chairs now, so.
When you get eighteen in there, it's pretty full. It's pretty busy and so.
The next last bullet there about the curriculum, Common Core standards, it sounds like that whatever Superintendent Gallagher's here, that that's changing some part. Do you guys change as that comes along and it's the same as the school? Is that?
Right, I try to, I stay in touch with the school and work with like Mark Louie and all the teachers on math and science. I meet with them, you know, once a week usually. And in fact, I've given them a lot of smarter balance things to work on. Yeah.
And our curriculum is aligned strictly with the LHS. We use the same textbooks, the same curriculum they use. We have additional curriculum that Jay also utilizes with our kids.
It just seems like it's really pushing harder and harder on our.
Well, what I was going to, what I was going to say, when Lauren and Amy were in school, you needed Algebra One and Geometry and Math. Then they made it three credits. So you need three credits. You need to take Algebra Two last year. Well, before that, you could take Applied Math, you could take Problem Solving, you could take a lot of different classes to fulfill that third year. Well, now they made it Algebra Two, so I'm going to get more students all the time because they can't pass that at the high school. Our curriculum is set up where it's very challenging, but we can go at a slower pace. I can sit with them, other students sit with them, we get tutors, whatever it takes to get that student to pass that class. So we're very successful in that. But at the high school, it's tough because the classes are, you know, twenty-five, thirty kids.
Well, and that's getting right back to the question about how many can you teach there? What's your capacity of, what you're saying is we end up with more coming through.
Right. I don't see any less coming through.
I, that's where I'm at too. So we definitely need this service here. Stay here, keep going.
Those are current challenges in the youth program. Again, increasing employment opportunities and that's always a challenge in the youth program. As we've talked, it's hard to get adults in the employment sometimes. It's even harder for those individuals aged eighteen, sixteen especially. So that's where the youth program is very important. When Jeff can go out and solicit a work experience with one of the employers here in town to get that kid some, some real hands-on experience in learning how to work and show up on time and to do a job when he's there. So that's one of the big advantages our program offers to the kids that are in our program. Career and college readiness, we have several kids that go on from our school and go into community college or vocational programs or even university level work. So and of course, we're aligned with the forty, forty, twenty, as everybody else in Oregon is right now. And like you guys alluded to, we assist Lakeview High School with graduation. I think in a couple of slides you'll see actually how we impact number-wise. So of course, we are an accredited alternative school. Our average enrollment again is seventeen. We serve over forty students a year referred to as Lakeview High School. Three full-time instructors basically is myself, Jay and Jeff is who works in the youth program. And again, we have a strong partnership with Lakeview High School. Since our inception here in Lake County, we've had a really good relationship with Sean and the high school staff. So here's our outcomes for this last school year. We had kids that are in a hundred and forty-six half credits that they probably wouldn't have earned if they hadn't come to our center. We had five kids are in GEDs and we had four kids complete their high school diploma by going to our school versus Lakeview High School, which they probably would have lost at that center. So I think Jay said they had graduated class of forty-five last year.
Forty-five, I think it was.
So four of those kids graduated, well, ten percent basically graduated because they came to our alternative school. That probably wouldn't have graduated otherwise. And we also had the five GEDs in addition to that. So nine kids out of four got fifty-four, I think, involved.
So you're saying ten percent of could have been dropout rate for our high school at COIC? Got no problems.
Yep.
I thought, great.
It's really great. And the GED part, I guess I'd like you to speak to kind of the age range because without this program locally, you know, because a lot, almost every job anymore requires either a high school diploma or a GED. What kind of impacts we're having here in our communities because of that? Are they much older folks?
I met with, with people over forty, forty-five, fifty over the summer.
Yeah, and that's something Jay has always, throughout, as long as he's been here, he's always been willing to work with our adults. We don't have a really adult ed center in our office, but Jay's always offered homework packets and tutoring and he'll work with our adults in there. As far as age range for GED, Christie, you might, how many adults do we have that access GED services?
Well.
Either in jobs or just off the street adults.
We get quite a few. I'm going to say anywhere between one to two a week that will walk in and ask if we have any GED classes for the adults and we don't. But KCC, they came in, I think it was at the end of last week and wanted some information and they're going to try to put together a GED course.
And I've had conversations with Dr. Ketersen in Clamath about that as well. ABE, he's really trying to expand the ABE program in Clamath Falls and bring into Lake County the Innovation and Learning Center.
Yeah, it's, you should note that the GED services for adults under WIA is, is not a, that's Title II program that is handled by community college. Years ago, we used to be the provider for those services.
See, Kevin, we find this in so many things that we do and we're speaking specifically about education and job trainings right now. And that's what I would like to see us and I know we're doing, we're having those conversations such as with Dr. Ketersen, where we put that thread through all the different organizations we have so that if they come and talk to Christie, she knows that all they have to do is go down and talk to Christie, wait to get into the KCC program so that we, you know, we're all communicating in a way that we actually do get the outcomes we're after.
And one thing you guys should be aware of, I'm not sure if you were, the GED changed completely last January. The, the standards are much, much higher. And in fact, our data is showing in Central Oregon, and I'm sure Jay's starting to see that here, we have students who pass their State Oaks exam who cannot pass the GED. The standards are much, much higher. It's a much more difficult test to pass. It's going to take longer for students to get it now. They're going to take much more remediation. They, you know, typically now, it's normed against sixty-five percent of graduating seniors cannot pass it. That's how it's normed nowadays. So it is a much, much higher standard. And that, hopefully that will get around to the business community at some point because, you know, oftentimes, sometimes people look at that as, oh, that was the easy way out. That is not the easy way out anymore. We have students now who are coming in and taking the pre-test and deciding to go for their diploma instead because the GED's too difficult.
And I did relay some of that information on to the KCC person that came by. And told, you know, they, they would need to get to where people can come in and do study groups and.
Yeah.
So we were ahead of the game. We purchased some materials, Aztec online program that is all aligned with the new GED. It's a really nice program that does really nice assessments, so students could go in, they, they take the pre-test and then it gives you a diagnostic readout on what, where they're, what areas they need to work on. So Jay can say, okay, you need help in this area. So we start them at the level they need to be and then help work them up to. It just, the data is showing right now, we're going to see less GEDs and it's going to take kids a lot longer to get it.
So back to that other slide, five GEDs, does that count towards the non-dropout rate also?
The G, yeah, the GED is a.
So it's more than ten percent?
Right, correct.
It could be pushing twenty percent dropout rate if we didn't have COIC.
We were conservative when we said ten percent.
The GED is a neutral outcome for school districts, so basically they're removed from the cohort group. But they do count against a graduation rate. That happened when No Child Left Behind came in. That GED used to be a neutral for both graduation and GED. Now it counts against your graduation rate, but it's still a neutral for dropout rate.
And I have one other comment or thought. One of the slides showed the disadvantaged kid percentage or something there about having work ethics or whatever. The increase, no background.
Increase employment opportunities.
Yeah, increase employment opportunity. One thing, and I guess the easiest way to relate to these less swabs, Lake County kids have always been known for work ethics and that's high on my list. And that's probably going towards Jeff and that part of the program is, is if we continue to instill that into these kids, that work ethic, show up to work and do your job and do it well, most always the kids, once they get into the adults in the less swabs world, Lake County kids went a long ways over the years. And if we keep that going, those values within our kids here, that's very important. I really appreciate that.
Agreed.
So that slide just explains a little bit of experience that we have working with youth programs and what we're doing. What's that stuff, comments? It's integrating youth programs and workforce, which is nice in our center because our school is connected direct to our career center. So when we have kids that are sixteen and older that are ready to start looking for work, we have them come over to the adult side. Christie works with them, hooks them up into iMatch skills, talks about how to prepare a resume, how to fill and drop application out. And we're going to start integrating them into the whole work, the work world. So that's kind of unique enough in our center over there. Promoting the National Career Readiness Certificate, you guys probably heard something about that over the course of the last two years. The NCRC and Governor's CWRC initiative. Christie is actually offering our first NCRC official testing this Thursday and she's very excited about it as well. So we're having a bunch of our youth, six of our youth coming over and taking that Thursday. So that's exciting. So we're going to integrate that as a regular part of the program, this program here as well.
The only thing that I would add is, mentioned some of the slide, this Youth in the Labor Force report that the State of Oregon Employment Department, their regional, their economist, economist team put out and really analyzed the disproportionately high unemployment rates for youth. And I think what it has done is I think spurs some level of thinking at the state at least around the need to maybe invest more in youth employment type programs. And I think the governor's budget may include some money for, to increase state money to support youth programs. And we of course would support that. Not knowing the details yet, we're very supportive of increasing.
Because of my background, I'm all for safety and I see that as one of the barriers to youth employment is all of the rules and regulations we put around youth working. We almost can't employ them in the typical jobs that started them out and their, as Commissioner Winters alluded to, their, their learning about, you know, work and responsibility and all those types of things. So I think there's other issues at play here besides just, you know, other ways to employ them, so.
Well, and what we've seen, and sorry, I'll speak Clamath because I know it a little bit better, but we've seen a different dynamic in the workplace as well. Traditional youth jobs, fast food, customer service, courtesy clerks at Safeway are being filled by older workers in Clamath Falls especially. I don't know if you're seeing that as much over here, but it's creating even a harder time for youth to get in back into the workplace because of that.
We're having a problem with that period at Walmart here, so.
See, I know, and you, yes. And your friend Myers, I saw that there.
It gets me started on the minimum wage. We no longer have trainees wage where, where the minimum wage is coming up, where people are trying to consider that a living wage. It's doing away with our middle wage and our youth and everybody, a lot of them are, are ones that's not getting the job now. I think that's a.
There's a lot of factors.
Minimum wage is getting pushed up so high.
It's going up again January first, twenty-five.
Mom and pop places, they can't afford, and we're seeing even corporate starting to hire part-time because they can't afford everything that's going on with it. And I just believe it's going the wrong way myself. And so a lot of people don't agree with that.
Yeah, I want to argue with you on that, Commissioner. That's, we're seeing the same thing. So now I have our segue into our youth work education program. This is our youth crews. We have a school year crew that we run from September through, through May, basically, working with our kids that are primarily in our alternative school, but some of the kids are at Lakeview High School as well and participated in our work crew. This year, they're doing three days, three days a week work on crew. They'll work basically a full day with Jeff, going out doing various projects throughout the period. And then they'll spend one day in the classroom with Jay, working on, on particular credit retrieval typically. So again, as Commissioner Shaw knows from our, our meetings, those first four bullet items on there, what we hear employers time and time again tell us they look for in any employee, not just youth, but that's what we try to instill in our kids. And like Commissioner Winters said, that's what Lakeview's been proud of. So those are the things we try to teach our kids in particular is work ethic and just those soft skills that you don't learn necessarily in a classroom. They'll learn by going out and doing it. And so that's a key component of being in our youth crew. And these are actual projects. I don't know, Jeff, if you ever mentioned that, that kiosk you guys were working on on that previous picture.
That was out at the Harts Bar or Hart Lake, at the south end of Hart Lake. And this is the Joe Lake seeding project where they did some juniper burn after knocking down some junipers.
So we went. You guys were reseeding some.
We went out and reseeded it, I forget, squirrel tail and some other type of grass that I, I forget the name of now. But that, that was a, a good project. It was hard, I mean, it was hot and kids worked hard. We had to pack a lot of seed. We did a, we did a lot of, I think we spent just about four weeks with BLM, four weeks with the Forest Service. We did a, we did the Lofton Fishing Dock. We repaired that. We did trail work at Cottonwood Meadows and Lofton.
Built some more rock walls.
We built, we finished the rock wall in the Sunstone area finally, so that was good. A variety, we had a really, a really good crew. We were really fortunate. We had no absentees whatsoever. One boy broke his foot playing soccer and missed three days and then he wore a boot for the rest of the time. And so it went really well. It went really well. I think the kids learned a lot, work ethics, I know they, they learned that for sure because they had to work hard and be there every day. They were there early and, and knew the importance of doing that. We had a meeting with the parents before we started the crew and explained exactly what we expected. And so, yeah, it went real well. This year with the school crew, we have six kids currently on the school crew. And so far, even though we're early, that's working well. We've tied that into, to being in school as, as part of the benefit of being on the school crew. So, so if they're not in school on their end day and they're not accomplishing something, then they don't get to be on school crew. And it seems to be working out really well. So it gives them some good incentive to get their educational stuff done. And I, I think it's going real well.
What are some of the projects you got lined up for this fall, Jeff?
This fall, we, we have the Forest Service, we're going to be working on some beaver type.
Beaver deceivers?
Beaver deceivers to, to trick the beavers into doing, building dams in different spots.
Beavers are really smart though.
They, they are really, so it's going to be our doubt smart. But we, what we're doing, we did some trail work. We just did the North Warner Viewpoint and widened that out and brushed that really well for, for the county. You know, we, we went ahead and did the, the building down there and planning on doing the fence there at Roberta around the man camp. And Dave and I are working on that, so that should get started fairly quickly.
And we're just waiting for materials.
We're just waiting, yeah, and that should, that'll happen really quick, it sounds like.
We're going to go out tomorrow and measure actual material list so we're not, you know, Jeff will be in the middle of the project. I don't want him to run out of material and have to chase me down. So we're going to go out tomorrow and measure for everything that we need for the project this way. He just moved forward.
We've got some smaller stuff with some senior citizens that, you know, we may paint a fence and for a. We've got some smaller stuff with some senior citizens that, you know, we may paint a fence and for.
Got some contract work maybe coming up.
And some contract work, yeah, with the fencing project for some contract work that should take us about ten days. But what I think we really, where we gained a lot on is on our natural resource program. And that's the kids receive credits for our natural resource program. So this year we're working closely with the Forest Service BLM. Dave's going to do a fencing infield class type thing for us. But we have the fish biologist that's going to do stream flow measurements, different things on that. We've got a Craig Foster with Fish and Wildlife. And one thing in our package is a cougar and bear and different wildlife stuff. So, so he's going to come, you know, when he gets a cougar and dissect the cougar and maybe do some deer wildlife counts and stuff with the student. Giving them a more professional and, you know, on hands type deal there. The, the fire, the forest, our fire management officer Barry Hanson is going to take the kids out on a controlled type burn. And we're going to suit them up and, and hopefully and, and do some fire behavior stuff.
All very safe.
All very safe. I've already discussed it with Barry and we're going to be within our, all the guidelines on everything there. So hopefully that'll encourage some kids to maybe pursue that and get some red cards and do some different things there. So, so we're working with the different agencies. I think on the fifteenth, we're going to go out with the BLM and do some range and, and juniper control stuff. Some different things that have to do with our natural resources here in Lakeview. Cornerstone Industries that also approached and I've talked to them about maybe taking the kids on a tour out there one day and explaining what we're doing there. So, so we've got some different things in the works to get the kids involved with some, with some projects.
One thing I want to make sure, point out on that, we leveraged over a hundred thousand dollars last year. And that's important to our program because again, our, we, as Commissioner Shaw probably knows, our reallocations have dwindled every year for the past several years. So if we had to rely strictly on our reallocation, we wouldn't be able to serve nearly the number of kids, especially in our crew and in, in summer projects without being able to leverage those funds, whether it's from the county or the school district or the BLM and Forest Service have been excellent partners with us. So again, that extra hundred thousand dollars allows us to serve that many more kids throughout the year. These are just some of the examples of, of some of the industry partners that we've worked with over the past year where we place kids in work experience. And again, we place them at the individual work sites so they can learn how to be an employer. That's just a list of some of them. And again, we also serve North Lake, as you guys know.
We have one boy attending, what is it, Embry?
Embry University?
University for aromatics and stuff that it was part of our work experience program and, and has benefited quite a bit from what we're doing. So, so it's working out well.
Again, this is something we've already covered before, but forty plus youth served and et cetera. The first one was five EBS and the thirteen students we had in work experience. These are the outcomes, these are the federal performance standards that were held to in our youth program agency, the actual COIC numbers, we've always exceeded those. The year we've gotten young where we exceeded those numbers.
These are important because they're obviously on the ground outcomes, but also, you know, as, as funds are allocated to, to regions and local areas, et cetera. You know, we're not able to meet these performance standards, the funding's at risk. So it's very important, you know, we don't want you all to be caught up in the numbers, but for us, it's very important to meet these federal standards to, to maintain good standing with.
Sure track record that we've been able to make the leap over the years, so.
Now, is this COIC wide?
That's COIC Region eleven, that's.
Okay.
Our numbers are better than Region ten probably.
Yeah, well, that's what I was saying.
Region ten and eleven are, are very high performers and amongst the highest performers in the top region certainly, not the highest. I'm proud of that.
And then we want to put some, some faces in some locations to actually give you some real examples of how our youth program has been successful over the past year or so. This is Yanni, she's, again, you can read her story there, she played her diploma with us. Also learned work ethic, working with Christie and Jeff and our, our youth crew. And Jay is constantly talking about work ethic over there. And now, as you see, she's full-time at Burger Queen. You may see her in there if you want to go to her, you get a burger, yes. And there's Cody, and again, you guys probably, you guys know Cody, Jay, you might, okay, you know what I'm talking about, Cody. Cody also graduated in two thousand.
Well, Cody was, Cody was a kid that came in and, and he was actually just going to drop out of high school. So with, working with mom and dad and some motivational things with Cody and, and got him on track and got him caught up on, so, so he didn't feel so overwhelmed at school. And talked him into taking one class at LHS so he could walk with his class after two years at COIC. So that worked out really well. Got him a job at Chevron and worked up there for quite a while and he just went into military last month.
Have you heard from him since he's?
I haven't, I talked to Pat, have you heard anything?
I haven't heard anything, very good kid.
Right, so he's still there as far as you know of him?
Oh, yes. But, but Cody's typical of, of somebody that feels overwhelmed or, or doesn't fit into the high school or whatever and, and can come in and, and feel at ease and, and have a, a good experience.
And succeed, yeah.
And succeed. So that's, that's kind of what it's all about for us.
So now that transitions us over to Creteers Program. Christie, and again, it's our eighth year, we've been here since two thousand and seven, when we opened our doors here in Lake County. And here's the information, Commissioner Shaw, you asked about before about average job postings, and this is where Christie can talk about.
And when Mo and I came a few months ago, we were kind of in the hype of the, of the job market because, you know.
Yeah, we were coming off.
Seasonal and stuff. But in average, we have about eleven job postings, I think right now we have eighteen posted. Some are skilled, some are just entry level.
So how long do those stay on the board, Christie?
Normally until they're filled or.
And what were you saying, as an average, two weeks, four weeks, six months?
Couple of months at least.
Really?
Yeah. For instance, Subway, they may post a job and, and she may fill it within two or three weeks. But then we're posting another one because.
Somebody else has left.
Yeah, so. And then the mills, Pacific Klein Products and Collins bring on and they post jobs quite frequently.
And what we try to do, I think Pacific Klein was notorious in the old days, just keeping a pool of applicants. And really, that's not what we're supposed to do, we're supposed to be posting a job that's actually open. So I think Christie's had a lot better job supporters following it for those employers, making sure there's an actual open available for those individuals who may apply, so. Here's some of the challenges that Christie has noted, that she sees working over there every day. And it goes back to some of the points you guys mentioned as far as lack of full-time family wage positions, benefited positions. That's not just Lake County unfortunately, that's been seen out throughout the state and I'm sure across the country. That jobs are moving more and more to part-time, non-benefited type positions.
And most of this information comes directly from the employers here.
As far as the job seekers, you don't show up to work and they'll tell you that that's when you're seeing.
What percentage of our employers require a drug test?
It's increased actually, Subway's actually looking at drug testing. And normally, they don't. But both the mills do now. Pacific Klein about eight months ago went to drug testing, so that was, not, I thought it would be a higher turnover than what it was, and so did they, but it, it wasn't too bad. McFarland Door, they drug test, the hospital drug test, you know, so I don't know what the percentage would be, but it's increasing.
And with the youth, it's marijuana, you know, that stays in your system for a month, so. It's not uncommon for us to look and say, before we take them somewhere, I mean, as far as getting them a job at Chevron, have you smoked marijuana? I mean, you know, you never used to ask that, now you do. Have you done that? Because you, you need to pass the test. Well, I can't pass it, okay.
And their mindset now for the adults is, and when they come in the career center and we're working with them, well, it's, it's going to be legal. What should I explain? It's legal to drink as well, but I can't go to work drunk every day for a period of time.
Or not every day, actually, Christie. So, you know. I'm trying to clarify that for Christie.
Yeah, but their mindset is, okay, you know, the employer has to hire me because it's going to be legal. Well, no, the employer does not have to hire you, so. Getting them over that, that mindset.
Heard that more and more.
Yeah, it's just a problem, it will be a problem as, as we go through this, I'm sure it doesn't call it a one.
Yeah, I don't know what employers do there, you know.
Okay, so this is kind of the adult role, this is the role Christie plays in her side of the shop over there.
Was this, was this slide a test?
Is that a test? She wanted to make it look like she's really busy all the time.
Yeah, look at all the things she does.
She does that every day, all day.
Those are my roles, you know, as we work with the Oregon Employment Department, DHS.
You could have put that on two different slides, that's a good point. That already fills the page up better than that way though.
You didn't find. Thank you.
I can actually.
I could have put it on four slides, but I really cut it down to just one. Probably makes me do everything now. No, but that's some of the things that we do on the, on the adult side, and it gets confusing because a lot of the employers and just community members, they don't know what COIC really does. We work with the average person that just moved here. I'm working with a gal right now who's been in the dental field for twenty years, she moved here to take care of her mom. We worked quite a bit yesterday on ideas of employment because we've loaned out two dentists. So she's going to be applying at Advantage Dental, they have a dental assistant position available. And kind of helped her how to get through the hoops on that. And then we may have somebody walk in that's maybe not as educated or, or have as many skills. And so we, we help them through the hoops on that side as well, so.
It's a bit of that confusion about what we, people not knowing what we do, I'm just, I don't understand because our name is very self-explanatory. You see, COIC or Central Organizer or Governmental Council. And you, you think you know exactly what they do. So Christie does probably spend a lot of her time explaining what the heck we do when people come in off the street. And again, as we're getting more familiar and Christie's networking and stuff and employers know, I mean, there hasn't been a work source office in Lakeview for years. So I think all the employers know what it's called, Christie and COIC, where they, and what COIC stands for. This is our outcomes on the adult side, this is what Christie's put together, she did make this a little bigger for a lot. So again, a lot of asterisks there as you see on the side, again, that's our, that's our contract with DHS, that's our contracted services for the welfare and work program. Receiving TAN of cash assistance through DHS are required to do job search or participate in a work experience or jobs plus actually be part of receiving their, their cash grant.
So when we do that, what percentage of those sort of clients that fall into those programs actually end up moving off of those assistance programs and onto work?
Well, we are very proud of that in Lakeview. Michelle Totten at DHS, and her and I work very close with the, the TAN clients. I have eight clients right now. All of them are participating in either unsubsidized work. And we still have to track them because they may have received their TAN at, at the first of the month, but then we got to, you know, help them become employed. But we're still going to track those hours for the rest of the month. So I have eight, but I have two right now that are not participating very well. Everyone else is out either on a work experience, well, I don't even have a work experience right now, they're in a jobs plus or unsubsidized work, so.
So is there very many boomerangs where they come back?
There's a lot of recidivism in that population unfortunately.
But not as much as it.
Not as much in Lakeview.
We're Christmas Valley.
Yep.
When, when we started, Christmas Valley was huge. We have two, three clients in Christmas Valley right now, two that are not participating, and then one that's in the jobs plus. We had one that was going to, that had signed up to receive cash assistance, but then realized that she'd have to participate. They decided food stamps is enough, so.
Yeah, what's interesting is that not, not only, I mean, do the cases close because they've gotten a job and they're no longer eligible because their income is too high now. But some individuals, and probably a larger percentage than you would think, choose to end their TAN of grant because they don't want to participate in a job program. Whether it's jobs or classes or participate in a work experience, so, which is a win, and DHS is in the eyes, they count, that is a positive. So they've closed their cash case because they don't want to participate in jobs programs.
As I say, the, the Region eleven in its entirety, climate in Lake County is are, are very high performing in terms of this population, particularly compared to the state and compared to Region ten and other areas.
Good.
It's a hard population, but this crew does a good job in that way for sure.
These are some of the businesses that Christie has worked with and developed, so this includes adult dislocated workers in the, in the TAN of DHS side. So again, the asterisk ones we, we work as well, like Christie set it up in Christmas Valley. It's a, it's a harder commute sometimes, but Christie does make a point to get up there as much as she can to work with employers. And she can do a lot of it by email and phone as well, which is nice.
I wish that we, we could.
Do it more often.
Or even get a couple more businesses in Christmas Valley on board. I pretty much begged Chevron for the last two years and they just, so I'm, I'm still working on them because that, that would be a huge, huge business for, for us to be able to.
And you can see the Senior Center of Fairgrounds, Chamber of Commerce, all been good sites for us for work experience.
Well, I want to go back to what Christie just said. You've been working with Chevron there, the manager of the store, have you ever talked to folks here?
Yeah, I haven't talked to the new manager that they just brought onboard, so, you know.
Does he manage both?
Well, I'm talking about the owner.
Uh, no, we've never gone to the owner. We've met with the, I guess it was the business manager that was in charge of.
Hay rolling, does all that?
Yeah, for all the stores. In the, in the area, so that's a good idea, maybe make an appointment and visit with him a little bit about it.
Been supportive of different things over the years.
And the local Shell, we've worked with Jackie quite a bit.
And here's some success stories on the adult side.
And we did get permission to use the name.
I was wondering that.
Yeah, I figured you said.
And Emily is, she, when you're on the jobs program, she was required to put in twenty hours per week through COIC, whether it be in a work experience, jobs plus, whatever. Being in the, the career center to get her hours working on updating her skills or.
Doing your resume.
Resume assistance.
Applying for jobs online.
But in, with that, she also was doing CNA classes on top of it and a single mom with two kids. So I don't think I had her, I think a couple of weeks and she obtained employment at Green Mountain and now she's the chef manager and.
We agree.
She's doing great, so.
And now, let's segue back to Andrew.
Yeah, we just have a couple last slides. Again, just wanted to mention this earlier, a couple of things going on, this, this reauthorization. We're still wrapping our, our arms around the changes in the federal law that will be implemented. The regulations aren't out yet, so we, we don't know exactly all the impacts. We do know there, there are going to be some changes such as new performance standards on both the adult and youth sides. Ways of measuring progress, benchmarks, those sorts of things. And that will subtly shift our work, I believe. Two other things, I think the, the composition of the local board, there may be some changes in there as well. Any other significant OLA changes that you want to highlight, Kevin?
Not yet.
Yeah. We're, we're still.
We're still waiting for Department of Labor to start interpreting and sending out some guidelines as far as.
Yeah, yeah, but, but, yeah, stay tuned on that one. The other kind of major, I guess, change to how we were doing business or potential change is the local workforce investment area redistricting process. There are a couple of maps included in here, really from a, a big picture perspective, the state's going through a restructure of the entire workforce system. I don't want to get down into the details, but really the goal is to centralize and improve efficiencies in terms of, of program delivery. Where in the current model, multiple funding programs are run through different agencies. And so there was just some duplication, lack of common outcomes. So by combining that all into a single agency and then empowering. So by combining that all into a single agency and then empowering the local workforce boards to make more decisions and authority over funding, that's the point.
Yeah, I think it is too, Andrew, but, you know, when we first started down this road and the first time we met with Agnes, and she had John there at the meeting, first time I got very engaged in it for those first discussions. Governor's given us the opportunity to relook at our alignment. And the main thing I heard was local control. But the problem that I've had, and I'll address this Thursday at the meeting, is what kind of change in the outcomes of the programs do we expect with the local control versus what we currently have? Is to change just, I don't mean well down the road, but to change just to change for that perceived local control, there should be some additional benefits to this, so.
I appreciate that, and I agree full-heartedly that I think the restructure should be grounded in, yeah, what are the outcomes that we want to achieve? What are we trying to accomplish? What is either not working or what could be done better through a redesigned workforce investment system? We shouldn't lose track of that.
No.
Absolutely.
Well, otherwise, there's no reason to be in that.
It's keeping some consultants busy, maybe.
Oh, yeah, I think so.
Yeah, I included a couple maps in here, and I know Commissioner Shown's very aware of the geography here, being in a position of leadership on the Oregon Consortium. But currently, Clamath and Lake Counties are part of a 24-county local area that encompasses the entire eastern portion of the state, as well as Douglas, Coose, and Curry Counties, and Clatsup, Columbia, and Tillamook Counties on the North Coast.
Well, you know, Andrew and I don't want to dwell on this. And I, you know, we do have Western Oregon counties that are 24 member, but we brought it up before, just a few years back, and then I wasn't as engaged because Clamath County said Cheryl was very active and wanted to be in, so forth. But I think we could've got the same result, and I don't mean to bog us down because we are going down the other path, by just moving that to the central part of the state, the consortium administration.
That idea was bantered about.
Oh, I know, I know.
Yes, yeah.
But go ahead.
I mean, yeah, we can debate the pros and cons all day. You're right, it is kind of moving in this direction. And it appears to be well on its way. But, you know, I did have a map of the new configuration. The closest thing I can find, there are no maps, was this Oregon Solutions Boundary. So really, Commissioner Winters, you may also be very familiar with this. Really, the new configuration would be the blue counties around the central, as well as Wheeler County, which is not included in the blue. Again, I couldn't find a map that really laid out the new configuration. But the results really will be a new central corridor, a local workforce investment area composed of the 10 counties from the DOWs down to Lakeview and Clamath Falls. Eastern Oregon will have its own local area, the Orange Counties. And then the other kind of Oregon Consortium Counties, the darker purple counties, the Coose-Curry area, they will be a separate standalone local area. And I just learned that the Tillamook, Columbia, that those counties are gonna connect with Lincoln County, Lincoln and Benton County. And Lynn County's gonna join with Marion-Pope County. So everything's in play there, yeah. So that's less important to us, but it just shows that this is kind of a statewide reshuffling of the local areas. Intended to get a little more local control and kind of decrease the geographic size, allow more focus and alignment with the private sector within those local areas. Beyond that, this is all still in motion. The governor still hasn't really, I think, formally endorsed this. It still has to go to the Department of Labor, but things appear to be on track to roll out these new local areas as early as July 1. This is significant because it sets up a new governance approach. Well, there'll be a new local board that really provides oversight and strategic planning for the local areas that relates to workforce development. Beyond that, that's what we know. Commissioner Shown mentioned there's a meeting Thursday of this week in Ben, in which all the 10 counties are gonna come together with the governor's workforce advisor and some consultants to kind of work through some of the governance, board establishment, and some of the legal aspects of all of this. One of the big, most noteworthy things, a couple things are, you know, with the governance, we all need to be careful. The counties are ultimately recipients of the funding that comes from the federal government, and we want to ensure whatever structure is in place protects the county's interests. We make sure that funds are being invested appropriately and appropriate governance and oversight. The other thing is that the formation of this new local board will have a lot of implications. We want to ensure that there's representation along the entire 10-county region, and we have the right people at the table that business interests are strongly represented as well. Those are things that will be worked on. Really, the counties are guiding a lot of this. That's all we had. Again, we'd love to hear from you if you have questions or concerns. Love to hear it. Last thing I'll say is you've got a great team working here in Lake County. I know that for a fact. Folks that are stationed here full-time, but also Perry, the work that he does. And he's here frequently, providing oversight and working with the team. And Kevin, our youth program manager for all of COIC, is a great resource, and he's really developed an innovative approach to connecting school district funding, project funding, and federal funding for a great program.
Well, you know, I know how difficult it is to get the word out or to, maybe a better term would be something that would have it ties. But as we transition, you know, it's probably not the appropriate time, but as we get through the transition, which is a little Greek to me right now, if it's really gonna be by next summer or the following year, you know, on our last meeting, that discussion. But my point is, COIC, you know, to the discussion on eight years, is a little less than that because I'll be in office eight years, and I had someone sit in my office the day we were sworn in with the old. Still terrifies me, you know, who you're facing. But with that said, I think we've gotta get the word out better, all of us collectively, on just what COIC has to offer. Because there's so many positive things. And I know you're all busy as it is, but I think you could end up busier in serving even more.
Well, you know, we just walk through however many slides of things we're really good at, and we pat ourselves on the back about, and we are doing good work. I will always freely admit, we are not good at marketing ourselves. We're not good at self-promotion.
Well, yeah, but Andrew, I think that's where this new, maybe some of the more localized control can help with that, because one wouldn't expect you'd be patting yourself on the back. But as an organization within the new consortium, the Central Oregon Corridor, we need, you know, those involved with the boards and administration, I think, need to work on strategizing, how do we get the word out there so no one has to wonder? And we can get back to this whole thread notion that if they come into our office here, then we have the opportunity to provide them with good information, even if we're not offering that service, where you go because we're a partner with that. And it just, I think it can grow and become even better. We're pleased, but apparently not very pleased.
I have a clarification on one thing. Back to the GED, and I think you said 65% of seniors couldn't pass the GED at the new.
Kevin said that.
Kevin said that. Wow. Shouldn't the GED and the diploma be equal on... Well, and I know it's not, you guys have broken it down, but.
Yeah, Brad, you know, historically, the GED was, it came about after World War II, and it was for folks coming back who went into the military to serve and didn't have time to complete their high school diploma. We have seen increases in the level since my 25th year. Twice they have upped the standard. But it's always been kind of a, you know, for that student who was, you know, either I'm ready to go on to community college or I'm ready to go to work. I'm just kind of, I'm done. It's now becoming really focused on college-ready and career-ready is the new. I mean, you can even get an endorsement on your GED that's stamped. It's kind of an honors GED that says you are college-ready and career-ready. So, you know, just my personal opinion, I think we're kind of losing a little bit of what it was initially intended for, which was a population of students who were ready to go to work. They wanted to go to work, and they wanted to present to an employer that, you know, I've met this standard, and now I'm ready to go to work. I think it's gonna take a couple of years of data. We only have a half a year of data so far. Last year in Region 10, we did 103 GEDs before January 1. We did 32, I think, after. So that tells you that, you know, that how much more difficult it became.
Well, if you're set on the hiring side, and if the GED is harder to get than the diploma, it might be that the hiring board's looking at the people with the GED.
But that will, and I agree, but I think it's gonna take a long time for that because I don't think you're gonna see anything coming from the Department of Ed stating that.
I know, and I'm going way out there. I just wanted some clarity.
Well, on the old test, there's five components, you know, math, science. If you scored, it was between 0 and 600, if you scored a 500 or over, you could get into University of Oregon. So that was.
Not only you, oh. You couldn't get into LSU with that score, but you could get into U of.
University of Oregon. You could get into major universities if you had over 500 in every domain of that test. Now it's between 0 and 200, and I don't know what it is. I mean, I know you have to have this... The two kids I had take it today, they didn't pass practice tests. But they were, one was nine points away on this math, and another was 10 points away. So we can work with that, and maybe by Christmas, our goal is to pass those.
And another problem is Common Core hasn't been around that long. So, you know, the students that we typically get that are going for a GED, they haven't been exposed to that modality of teaching. It's a whole new, it's a whole new way of, certainly you have seen examples. And so now to get them, you know, we're having to go back and work with them at sometimes 4th and 5th grade level to bring them up to where they need to be.
They just like the skills.
Yeah, right. And I think you'll see maybe in four or five years when we start receiving students that have been exposed to Common Core, if it lasts that long, then they'll be more prepared to take it. But right now, we have students that, it's really foreign. They look at it and go, oh, wait, I'm gonna get my diploma. It's easier.
Wow. That hurts too. Just one other comment. I don't know if the play on the adult side or the youth side, we're all aware that Red Rock may come or may not, but there's been talk of, they did get their grant for the construction site. They still have other things to do. That will impact the workforce. And with the indirect jobs also, some I think COIC will have maybe some challenges.
Yeah, I plan on contacting the contact person and letting them know the services that are available here in Lake County to help them recruit, screen, you know, whatever they need.
See, Christie, and that comes in with contacts that you could have with KCC. I mean, we work with them with the early learning, but we've said, you know, we want to have the ability for the newer jobs, newer technology, whatever you want to call it, whether it was the solar before, now the biomass, biofuel, and the indirect jobs that will come with that, so that we are prepared to, as best we can, to provide the necessary training, education, so that our local workforce has the best opportunity to get new jobs.
And that's why I want to contact them right away. So hopefully, we can get some of the locals working.
So my third, hopefully, final thing is, is we hear a lot of the good in everything that we're doing through COIC, community and everything. What's some of your challenges? What are some of the things here in Lakeview, Lake County, Christmas Valley? The challenges that are, to try to reach out in another fashion or get people... And I think goes back to what Dan was saying about the education of what's available here. What kind of, you guys have challenges that you, that's.
I see it's from, and Kevin can probably say a lot more, but at home. I mean, it starts, these kids, they have no work ethic. They have, it's generation after generation.
How do we break that generational?
Well, one of the things we try to do, and I was sharing this with, they like the word holistic. But when we get a kid in, and I know Jeff and I look at the holistic thing. We look at the family, we know who they are. I mean, you know, it's, Lakeview's a small community, so that helps us in bridging the gap between that. And some of it is meeting with mom and dad and saying, you know, maybe you need to change the way to do this, you know? Expect so-and-so to be at school, that's a safe place. So there's that kind of thing that we have to keep working on, is.
I think that starts way back in kindergarten.
But still, it has to be done. You need to shower, you need to clean your hair, you need to do this, you need to do that, so.
Some of the students, I think, and a couple that we've had success on, have to point out that, hey, it's your responsibility, you know, to break that. So even though mom and dads may not be involved or probably will not, you know, to get that installed in the youth, that it's their responsibility to change things.
A lot of single-family parents. I mean, you know, the struggle with raising a kid and working. You know, so on dad, mom, whatever, I mean, whatever it takes to.
They can't afford childcare on an average job.
So it's.
We have a single mom, young mom right now that's on the school crew, and she's having to learn to get her child to the babysitter, to be on time, the importance, you know, and to work. And it's challenging because they've never had that experience.
A lot of people don't realize that's why you deal with a.
That's a challenge.
Well, it's gonna be very interesting along those lines, and we may or may not miss room being involved in it at that time. But, you know, we have so many new programs out there from early learning, which is gonna hopefully address a lot of the things you all deal with in teenagers, you know, that might help that. And so, you know, maybe we're headed in the right direction. I don't know if we'll know for a while, but it's a challenge.
But all I will say, and I'm not saying it because I'm sitting in here with you guys, but I've told my staff, Dave knows this, if I, this is the best community as far as partnering that I deal with, without a doubt. From the county to the school district, to the Forest Service and partners, we couldn't ask for any more cooperation. I mean, it's, everybody does a great job trying to get to the same point, so. Certainly don't have any complaints. I used, people, sometimes when they're hired, it's like, Lakeview, where the, like, it's the best place to work. It's the best place we have to go, and you're gonna get support from all the partners, so. Certainly work ethic, it's frustrating. When I started, a long time ago, we had, I think I've talked with you guys before, you know, in Creek County, we had mills, 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 mills. Work ethic wasn't a problem. We had kids come and, kids knew how to work, it was just there. But over the years, I don't think it's just my age, and I was talking with Jeff a little bit. I mean, literally, you have students who have never started a lawnmower, which means you've never done chores, which means, so you have to be very patient. You have to set short-term goals. You have to be very, very patient again, you know? But you have to just continually, you know, I, and I will talk with Jeff, you know, work ethic solves everything. A job solves lots of issues, and we, a lot of times, you try to teach the kids, you have to separate, you have to separate all your issues, you know? What, when you're out here working, work. Separate all your personal issues and everything else. We all have to do it, and they need to learn how to do that. And they need to focus and concentrate on good work ethic, and then things will get better. And I think they see that once they're there a while. They start seeing that, okay, it does work, but getting to that point takes some time. I think the work experience is the best thing we can do. The work ethic. The work ethic is, they need that in school, too. I mean, Jay, I'm sure runs into that, but you're not going to be successful in school if you don't attend and you don't apply yourself. So, you know, I just think that's our number one goal, that's our focus, that's what we have to teach them, and they'll be successful if they follow the right steps.
Well, Kevin, and I really appreciate those comments, because I think you're right on the many, and I think you're filling multiple voids in their life otherwise, and you all are to be admired for that, because whether it's at home, whether it's at school, whether it's labor laws, whatever it is, the fact that that's your focus and you're going to overcome that, maybe this generational problem, in our small way, we will help solve that, so.
And we instill that too on the adult side, you know, 20s and 30-year-olds that are trying to teach.
You're working with the parents of some of our kids.
Right, yeah.
Leave it behind, you know, fired because they, for some reason that you shouldn't even be thinking of at work, you know, leave it at the door and you have to go to work because if you lose your job, then you're right back, so.
In some cases, the kids may be more responsible than the parents are, you know, so.
Well, Andrew, Perry, Kevin, Christie, Jay, Jeff, thank you very much. Thank you very much. Oh, we appreciate it. Was there any other questions?
No, I asked, I asked Christie to give the full mill dill so that I would understand more, because, you know, we deal, as Commissioner, with so many different things, that Commissioner Shown was very versed on it, I wasn't, so this helped me a lot, appreciate it very much.
And I did bring some...
We will adjourn, please.
Oh.
At 12:00.
And here's the next...